If we could please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, undeniably, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. We're gonna move on to our Golden Apple Awards. Dr. Lanz.
Thank you very much, Madam President. I'm happy to turn over to Mrs. Kohansky.
Thank you, Dr. Lanz. Our first Golden Apple recipient this evening is Danielle Hager, first grade teacher at Loon Lake Elementary School.
Yay!
Yep, very uncomfortable, most uncomfortable spot. There we are. Danielle was nominated by Loon Lake teacher Natasha Gee, thank you, just making sure, for being a selfless person who is always there for not only her students, but all of the students at Loon Lake. She brings a smile to everyone. Danielle's always seeing the best in people. She only spreads positivity and light to her colleagues, community, and students. Danielle also goes out of her way to help other teachers and ensure they have the resources, support, and knowledge they need to be successful. Danielle greets each of her students every day with a hug or a high five and makes sure, not just to tell them how happy she is to see them, but shows them. She brings encouragement to students who are not in her class as well by giving them opportunities to volunteer in her classroom, read to her students, and always ask them how they are doing. Danielle's continuously seeking professional development and growth and trains others in what she learns. Thank you, Danielle, for making your students feel seen and safe, and it's an honor for us to recognize you this evening. Congratulations.
And we'll wait till Danielle makes her way back before we start our next. And there we go. Our next Golden Apple recipient this evening is Ashley Ramirez, kindergarten teacher at Dublin Elementary School.
Ashley was nominated by teacher consultant Sarah Sharp for being an extraordinary teacher who genuinely loves her students. Ashley knows and cares about every single one of her students. She advocates tirelessly for their needs, and she works to help every single student reach their potential. As a newer teacher, Ashley's risen to every challenge with grace, positivity, and compassion. She's not afraid to reach out and ask questions or seek support from her school team. She loves her job, and she loves her students, and shows them in every single thing that she does. Her students and families are so lucky to have one of the very best kindergarten teachers there is. Thank you, Ashley, for your caring and kindness that you bring to your students, and it's an honor to recognize you this evening with the Golden Apple Award. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. See, we are gonna move on to public commentary. So, thank you all for coming tonight and for your interest in addressing the Board. This is your opportunity to address the Board. The Board will listen to your statements, questions, or concerns, will not have a conversation. If follow-up is necessary, a member of the superintendent's staff or Board member will get back with you. You have three minutes to address the Board. Please keep an eye on the timer on the wall, over there. If you come close to your time, Mrs. West will let you know that you're coming close and begin to wrap up your comments. We ask that all speakers remain professional and refrain from personal attacks. Thank you, and we're gonna start with state rep Noah Arbit.
Good evening, Dr. Lanz, President Kaplan, and esteemed members of the Board and community. Thank you for the opportunity to speak before you tonight. First, I want to extend my best wishes for a wonderful new school year to all of our students, teachers, and staff here in Wald Lake, and I hope the year is filled with joy, excitement, and discovery. But it is no secret that what should be an exciting back-to-school year, period, is taking place under the cloud of anxiety, uncertainty, and chaos caused by partisan gridlock in Lansing and the failure to pass an education budget for the new school year by July 1st as required by state law. I share your bewilderment, frustration, and anger that for the first time in living memory, students, teachers, and students here in Wald Lake and across Michigan are beginning a new school year without a state budget, leaving you, as a Board, to budget in the dark. I've never come before you or any Board to engage in partisan politics, and I won't do so today. But I will say this: Divided government does not have to be divisive government. But that's unfortunately exactly the kind of toxic environment that this Speaker of the House has created in Lansing. It is long past time for Speaker Hall to get serious and come to the negotiating table to fund our schools. For me, as your State Representative for Commerce and the Lakes area, there could be no higher priority than funding our kids' public education to the highest level possible and ensuring that amazing teachers like the ones that were honored here tonight have a salary that is exactly what they deserve and dignifies their hard work. Ensuring that vital programs like school meals and mental health and school safety programs are not gutted, that is also incredibly important. And that's exactly the kind of budget that I am fighting for. But I will never vote for a budget that strips our community of those vital programs or decreases funding for our schools in Wald Lake or for any school district in our community. I just won't do it. That's why, in March, I voted against the House Republicans' irresponsible education budget proposal, which would have slashed over half a million dollars, $681,561, to be exact, in state funding for the Wald Lake Consolidated School District. If they come before me with a substantially similar budget proposal, I will vote no again. This irresponsible partisan impasse that threatens a government shutdown in less than a month in Michigan must end now so that you can get back to the most important business at hand, which is ensuring that our kids here in Wald Lake have the best education that this state has to offer. I promise to continue keeping you and our community closely updated as these critical budget negotiations continue or get off the ground in the state Capitol. So, thank you for your leadership and partnership on behalf of our community.
Thank you. Next, we have Lisa Young.
Hello, good evening. My name is Lisa Young. I'm here with my husband, Matt. We have two beautiful daughters in the school district. But before I tell you about why I'm here, I want to preface what I'm saying with: When we moved into this district 20 years ago, so long before our daughters were born, everyone in our community, everyone in our neighborhood, everyone said, "Oh, my gosh, Wald Lake is the best district to raise your kids in and for them to go to school in." So, we started our family knowing that when our kids reached a school age, they would be going to the best district. And I come here to tell you that we believe that, we still believe that, but we have some work to do. So, we have a daughter, Abby, who's in fourth grade at Wickham Elementary. She requires a lot of these special services. So, when we found out her special needs, we were still confident that we were in a district that would support that. But we are going into her fourth year, fourth grade year, and we feel really disappointed. We are going into fourth grade with yet another inconsistency in the resource room that offers her the support she needs in math and reading. And I feel that the reputation of the district is falling very short. We talk a lot about our math numbers, our reading numbers, they're plummeting. Our students are not scoring what they should be scoring. Our expectation for them is very high, and they're falling very short. And I feel that that pressure is put on our teachers. Our teachers have to do more, they have to stay longer, they have to they have to build a better curriculum to teach our kids. But that pressure needs to go on our school board. We don't have a resource room teacher to offer the support that our kids need, but our teachers need to. Our teachers aren't special education teachers. So, our special education daughter needs a special education teacher. So, her deficits are growing when they should be getting smaller. Our teachers are going into this year already feeling defeated, but we have a fourth grade teacher who stepped up to the plate and said, "This is what I can do. I know it's not everything by law that Abby should be receiving, but this is what I can offer."
Thirty seconds.
She's already feeling defeated. So, you have to know that when we see a brand-new school going in across from where we live on Maple Road, it's hard to know that we have all this wonderful equipment, we have beautiful new flooring and windows and all this great stuff, but I feel it's being built on a crumbling foundation because we're only as strong as our weakest link. And our special education kids are being shorted, and we need to do better.
Time, please wrap it up.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Karen Mitchell?
Good evening. I was not going to speak tonight, but my name is Karen Mitchell, and I am a proud parent of an eighth grader at Clifford Smart Middle School, and I have an alumni who graduated in 2024 from Northern. I'm actually going to piggyback off of Lisa. You know, I agree with everything she just said. I have spoke within the last couple weeks to many teachers, many, many, many teachers in this district, and they are ready. Unfortunately, we are a non-walk state, but I'll tell you right now, they're going into this year with no contract. And I think it's extremely embarrassing. I know we're not the only district. I know there's many districts these teachers have zero contract. I think it's embarrassing. They deserve better. And if you need extra time to do a contract, then I feel like it should be a pretty fair contract. They deserve better pay. They're being overworked. Thirty-five to 45 kids in a classroom? How in the God's name is that safe? Somebody explain it to me, because if you're in an eighth grade, middle school, sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, and you got 45 kids in a classroom, what do you do if a fight breaks out? What do you do if the boys get into a scuffle in the room? Let's go back to the last meeting from the pre, just last year, very last school board meeting. Keith Elementary, Commerce Elementary are in shambles. Classroom's being evacuated. Have we ever fixed that? What is, what are you guys doing about it going into it this year? How are you making those buildings safe? We have a new principal now at Keith. We're losing teachers, losing staff, losing social workers. Last two years, we've lost three phenomenal that I know of. And the three phenomenal ones that I know of that we lost took a huge impact on this district. One of them gave Dr. Lanz a three-page exit letter as to why she was leaving. She's in, she was in your special education. It's sad. I also want to know, how in the world do you start this school year off short-handed with not enough staff? You're two pairs short over at Clifford Smart and ASD. How is that safe? What's that teacher doing over there in ASD? How's she managing that class on her own? Have you ever been in one of those classes? Do you know what it's like to evacuate a class? I don't know. You guys gotta do something. Wald Lake's gotta do better. That's all I gotta say.
Thank you. Christine Titus.
Good evening, Christine Titus, proud instructional specialist at Hickory Woods Elementary. My brief topic tonight, because I kind of talked a bit at the last meeting, is visibility. And totally different tack, but I want to give a quick thank you to Cabinet for being visible in the buildings. In the last week, I've seen Dr. Lanz, Mr. Durkin, Dr. Hamka, and Ms. Kidder today. And Mrs. Kohansky was at our instructional specialist meeting today. And Ms. Omer has also visited our building many times. And I just want to let you know that, and the public to know, that you guys don't spend all your time over here in your offices, that you're out and you're with students and you're checking in on them, not just the annual visits that you often make. So, I'd like to thank you for that, for being visible to us as teachers and to the kids as well. Also, I'd like to send out well wishes and hugs to Mrs. Crafton on a speedy recovery. Keep fighting the good fight, Suzy. Thank you.
Thank you. Tim Sawmiller.
Good evening. Tim Sawmiller, Commerce Township, using pronouns he, him, and his. What is the Invest in My Kids ballot proposal? Here are some answers to frequently asked questions. Is this a tax on small business? No. The 5% fair share surcharge is levered, levied only on individuals whose annual pro-taxable personal income exceeds $500,000 for a single filer or $1 million for joint filers. The revenue raised is dedicated to schools over and above current spending levels. 100% of the money raised must be expended to support classrooms in local school districts, including funding for career and technical education, attracting and retaining high-quality educators, and reducing class sizes. The money may not be expended for other purposes and is subject to an annual audit. What about the lottery money? The lottery is an important contributor to public schools in Michigan, but makes up less of that total than you think. In fiscal year '23, the lottery only made up 6.2% of the school aid fund. For every lottery dollar, 61 cents goes to prizes, 27 cents to the school aid fund, 9 cents to retail commissions, and 3 cents to fund lottery operations. Does money really matter for student outcomes? Yes. Recent research has consistently found that expenditure increases improve student achievement, high school graduation rates, adult income and earnings, and reduce poverty for disadvantaged students. While more money isn't, doesn't solve all problems, it helps a lot. How does this compare to other states? Michigan currently ranks 14th lowest in the country for average overall effective tax rate and is lower than all neighboring Great Lakes states. Massachusetts passed a similar fair share tax in '22 with great success. If we pass this, won't millionaires move to other states to hide their income? New research shows that the number of wealthy individuals has actually grown in states after increasing taxes on high earners. While it's certainly possible that some high-income individuals will pursue lower taxes in other states, they can do that now. Unfortunately, when it comes to hiding their income, American millionaires and billionaires are already evading about $150 billion in taxes a year, according to the IRS. The best way to handle that is not to lower their tax rates, but to fund the IRS to audit wealthy individuals. I realize that this school board will not, probably not take a position one way or the other on this proposal, but I'm sure it would welcome the increased funding it would provide.
Thirty seconds.
For those of you in favor of seeing this proposal on the ballot in '26, please see me after this meeting to sign the petition. Thank you and good evening.
Thank you. Next, Hillary Glazer and Brian Felpash.
Hi, everybody. My name is Brian Felpash. I'm here with Wald Lake Schools Federal Credit Union. And we have been in business for 76 years, and we open, we provide banking services for faculty and students of the school district, as well as their families. And this year, we had some extra money in our community budget. And when we have something like that occur, we like to spread it throughout the community. And so, this year, we had $50,000, and we decided, our Board of Directors decided to donate that back to the PTSA for the Wald Lake School District. So, every unit of the Wald Lake School District will be getting a $2,500 check from Wald Lake Schools Federal Credit Union. So, we're here tonight to present the check, to make that donation, and to hopefully spread as much community goodwill as we can throughout the community. So, yeah.
I'm Hillary Glazer. I'm the PTSA Council President. I'm also on, I'm the VP over at Walnut Creek PTSA and the legislative rep over at Wald Lake Central PTSA. I also work in the district. I cannot begin to tell you how amazing every single one of our 19 units are, including our ECC units, all of our high school units, middle school, elementary, they're all unique. And this $2,500, while it may not seem like a lot to some people, to each of our units, it's that much more time. They don't have to spend begging for money from their fellow parents and caregivers and families. And that much more time they can actually spend doing something. At the beginning of this year, I asked them all, "What's your purpose? Why are you here?" And for a lot of them, it's to do better, to do more in the community. And this check, all of these checks that we'll be getting, boy, do they help us really nail down our purpose and do better for the greater good. As a parent in this district and frequent volunteer, when Brian told me about this, I was, like, I did not know how to answer the email and just started crying, which you don't know. But I started crying because I was so grateful, knowing that, coming from when my kids were in elementary school, an elementary school that struggled.
Thirty seconds.
A Title I school. To raise funds, $2,500 can do a whole lot of good for every one of our units. So, I want to thank our, I want to thank your Board of Directors and the credit union as a whole and encourage everybody to open an account or look at auto loans or anything you need to. For someone who has a heavy background in marketing, I'm not plugging you guys very well, but thank you.
Yeah, no, it's our pleasure to do something like that. And if there's anything that we can ever do for anybody here in the room, we're happy. All of our money goes back into the community. We don't use our money to do a lot of traditional things that other credit unions would. So, if there's anything you guys need help with or looking for help with, if there's a way the credit union can get involved and help you out, always reach out to us because everything we do goes back into the community. So, we appreciate everything the school's done for us. Everybody here has helped us reach out to the district, reach out to the community. So, anything we can do for you, always reach out.
And I'll just end with, if you're ever lucky enough to receive a big fancy check like this, my 13-year-old asked, "Can you actually deposit that?" The answer is, the answer is no. But if you know my 13-year-old, that question is a fair one.
Thank you, and thank you to the credit union. We're gonna move on to administrative commentary. Dr. Lanz.
Thank you, Madam President. Mr. Scaling, we'll start with you tonight.
Thank you, Dr. Lanz. As was previously mentioned, I enjoyed being out in the buildings the last couple weeks, seeing all the hard work that the staff and administration have done to get ready for school, seeing the lovely faces of all the students as they come in and out. So, great start to the school year. It was great to be out in the building and see such fun and excitement. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mrs. Kohansky.
Thank you, Dr. Lanz. I echo Mr. Scaling's sentiment. It was great to be out and seeing everybody and welcoming them back. Getting introduced to classrooms full of kids who have no idea who I am. As a former elementary principal, that hurts a little bit, not gonna lie. I miss students and those relationships and the relationships with their families, but it's wonderful and energizing to get out and see the connections that our staff and our admin have with those families and observe that in, right up close. So, it was wonderful to be able to get out and do that. For those of you who've been watching, we know that the M-Step scores are in. Yay! Sorry, it's my little, it's my little plug for our spring state assessment. But yes, for those of you who watch that closely, please know that the Learning Services team and I will be unpacking all of that. And I say "unpacking" because, yes, there are a lot with the numbers and a lot to digest and a lot for us to be able to turn back around and share with the Board and share with the community as well. But we're looking forward to doing that. And great first days back. I'm really thrilled with new staff and their energy around being in front of kids and also for our veteran staff that are out there supporting those new teachers. It's really wonderful to see, and I'm excited for a great year ahead. Thanks.
Thank you, Mrs. Kohansky. Ms. Mayor?
And I guess I'm echoing likewise, time out in buildings. But I just wanted to highlight for our earliest learners, some of the startup of the school year things that our early-on, 0-3 staff are working on to improve their instruction as they go out into the community and homes, working with our earliest learners. And then also for our early childhood special education programs. It was just wonderful to see both at the ECC today, just the smiling faces and all of our early childhood special education students and teachers getting acclimated to back-to-school and all of those new routines. So, great.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Mr. Durkin?
Thank you, Dr. Lanz. I just wanted to continue the love and appreciation for our PTAs, and thank you, Brian, again for, you know, supporting us. Anytime we need anything, you're absolutely the right person to call. It occurred to me, you know, searching through our district's social media feeds the past few days, just the wave of all the PTA events and all the amazing things our PTA leaders do. So, I wanted to take an opportunity just to give them a shout-out. Typically, they go unnoticed. They're certainly appreciated, but they certainly aren't doing it for any notoriety or any fame. But whether it's the fundraisers, the community building, just the whole litany of things they do and, you know, throughout the year is just so much appreciated by our staff and families and certainly our students. So, I just want to make sure I gave them extra kudos this evening, given everything we're celebrating tonight.
Thank you, sir. Mrs. Omer.
It's just anticipation, Dr. Hamka. Don't worry about it. Again, I'd like to echo the comments regarding being out in the buildings. It's always fun to come to center, remind us all that what we're here for, obviously, is kids. I especially love the middle schoolers because you can always tell that they're just such a fun age. And it was interesting to see them struggle a little bit with their lockers, and it brought back memories of thinking about that, trying to get into your classroom. And there was a number of them after the bell rang that would be out there trying to get those lockers open. So, my heart bled for them, but it was fun to see them. And they seemed to just slow down, you know, which is a reminder to all of us in that regard. I'd like to thank Oakland Schools. We'll be benefiting from their residency program. Autumn, I'm not sure if I'm pronouncing her last name, Mercousy, will be joining us on October 6th in the Business Services. We signed up for the third leg of her journey. So, she'll be starting with October and staying with us through May. We're hoping to provide her with some excellent experiences as well as gaining from some of her knowledge that she's had, her experience. of her knowledge that she's had, her experiences with other districts. We're looking forward to that. The Audit of Financial Statements, they will be wrapping that up. We're expecting a draft financial statement end of September, which is a little bit later than usual. They had a little bit of a newer staff that worked through things diligently, but again, our staff, particularly Vicki Amore, worked very well with that, and they had very complimentary, getting through a lot of the details, as well as some new pronouncements from Gatsby. So you'll be getting that soon as we have it. So thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Omer. Dr. Hamka.
That was exciting. I can't wait. Thank you, Dr. Lanz. It's been, as everyone stated, it's been a really fun, exciting time with students entering the buildings. Today, I had an opportunity to visit several elementary schools, and so it was fun with student birthdays and the way they walk in line so perfectly, and those who don't remind me of me a little bit, but that's another story. I also want to really thank Human Resource Department, everybody that's part of it. I mean, since last year with the repurposing of Geisler and all the staff changes and movements around, I want to thank them for their commitment and their work to ensure onboarding was smooth and that, you know, badges were ready and computers were ready. I mean, it does take a village, right? And so I really want to thank all the departments that were involved in that process. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I also enjoy being out in buildings. I'm only one for two when it comes to middle school lockers, so you might have been a little bit more successful than I was, but I gave it a good shot. In, part of my job is also working with bond construction, and in order for our staff to be able to get into the buildings so that our rooms are ready, our hallways are ready, the buildings are ready, there's a lot of work that goes behind the scenes. And so I want to thank all of our staff and all of the contractors that we work with and all the companies that we work with to make sure that we are ready to go on day one, especially a shout-out to our Northern staff and Central and Western, because it was a little bit later for them to be able to get into their buildings due to construction. They knew that, and they were very flexible, and they were ready to get in those rooms and get it ready. So I appreciate all of that work. And going into the buildings over the summer to check on construction, they're just structures, right? That's all they are. They're brick and mortar, they're tile floors, they're fluorescent lights, but when you go in there and the students are there and the staff are there, that's when those structures become alive. Now, now they're a home for our students and staff, and that's why we call them school communities, because it does take the entire community to really bond together and to make that structure something that we're proud of and that people can call their home and their community. So thank you again for everyone making that happen. Madam President?
Thank you. We're going to move on to board commentary. I'm going to start with you, Mr. Smith.
Thank you, Mrs. Kaplan. Welcome back, I want to say, to the new school year, to all the students out there experiencing new friends, new faces, new routines. I know we have a new routine with both of my kids now at middle school, which is wonderful, that they're all at the same school. I just want to encourage all those students that are, that are out there, try something new this year, step out of the comfort zone, help one another, and really be the change. Of course, I'd be remiss, thank you to the teachers and the amazing staff at every, every school that we have for all that they do. Like you said, it takes a village, but just, just seeing all of the logistics, just everything coming back into, it's just amazing for everything that they do for our students. Just want to say my thoughts are with the families, of course, and the community in Minneapolis, and also to the good thoughts for Mrs. Crafton on her recovery. I know that we're all here for her. I do want to just state, I'm sure Mr. Segler will talk about it a little bit more, and Representative Arbet stated, but just write your legislator, please get on them, pass a budget, so we know what we have in our school aid fund. It would be, I just, the fact that they passed that deadline is beyond me, so write your legislators, urge them to do what's right and make sure that we have the proper funding for our educators across the state of Michigan. Thank you.
Mr. Lippett.
Thank you, Madam President. Last night was curriculum night, and that was my 19th and final curriculum night of Lippett's and Wild Lake Schools, which is a sad but wonderful thing. And last night was at Wild Lake Northern for our youngest. Going through curriculum night, you know, seeing, I want to pay particular attention to the teachers, because seeing the passion and preparation and frankly, the, just their own expectations of what success is going to look like in these classrooms is so, it's emotional to see, but it's also really important as a parent to know, wow, these teachers are doing everything that's possible to have your kids back and to do what's necessary to make them achieve in Wild Lake Schools. And it just means to me, when I walked out there, I wasn't thinking that my kids weren't in interesting classes, all they were in very interesting classes. I wish I could take some of these classes myself, but what I came away thinking was, we got to have a contract for these folks that represent the expertise and the caliber and the dedication that these folks are showing to my, to my kids and to your kids and to our community. So I want to make sure that we all are on the same page about what is in front of us right now in representing our teachers and staff properly. So that was the first thing I want to say. Moving on, I just want to give a shout-out to our PTSA organization. One of the things I learned myself is that when people, parents that don't know much about PTA, they might think, "Oh, it's such a heavy lift, and I have so much to do, I don't have time." You do have time. It doesn't have to be such a heavy lift to be involved. For me, I was the guy with the bullhorn at colored day, you know? Like, I got involved by being the silly parent. There are lots of ways you can contribute through the PTSA organization, so I'm sorry to add more work to you, Ms. Glaser, but please see Ms. Glaser to talk about ways that you can, you can be involved and be an impact in this year and beyond. And then lastly, I just want to echo comments regarding Trustee Crafton. We are all thinking about you, Susie, and wishing for the best wishes and quick recovery. Thank you.
Dr. Zellner.
Thank you, Madam President. I want to start by echoing what everyone said around being in classrooms. I did better than Dr. Lanz with the middle school lockers. They had no idea who I was. I was lucky enough to start at Central and say hello in my very cheerful, early morning vibe that I had, that when I was a high school teacher, my fellow teachers would say "no" to me. I brought that energy to Central, I'm not sure how it went over, but I did do the lockers at Smart. I think my favorite part is what Mr. Durkin does. I took a lot of pictures of parents and kids on their first day at Keith, and that was really lovely, and all the hugs from community members and the teachers. We do need to support and continue to support our teachers in terms of making sure that they get a fair contract, and also just echoing that it is pretty frustrating to do the work that we are meant to do for our most precious assets in our community when there is no budget from Lansing. And so, while our representative was here, there are other ones, you can call them too, or write a letter, doesn't hurt, to get them going. I also want to say thank you to the credit union. That is an incredible gift, and what a beautiful way to support the hard work of all of our volunteers in the PTA. And finally, my thoughts are with the victims in Minneapolis and all victims of violence and what violence like that does for people who are recovering as well in terms of the heartache that it brings up for some of our communities here in Michigan, and thoughts with Mrs. Crafton, and hopefully she'll be back with us soon, because it's not the same without her. That is all I have.
Mrs. West.
Thank you. So I hope that everybody had a positive experience in their first couple of weeks of school, in the new school year. I know that there were some challenges, especially the middle school levels. We condensed middle schools, they're a lot more crowded. Hopefully, people will adjust soon. I know that that's not easy, and it wasn't an easy decision for the board to make either, to close a school, but it's also about being fiscally responsible to U.S. taxpayers. So please understand that I know that there are some hiccups still, but I'm hoping that that will eventually work its way out. Regarding vacancies, I would really love to see vacancies filled, especially in our special department. I worry about those with IEPs and 504s, especially those who need independent par educator that, one-on-one, that we need those filled. We really need people to step up. If you're looking for a job, please, we have so many vacancies within our district. Come, come work for us. I really would love to see those filled. Our kids need you, our families need you. It's really important. And then lastly, I'm speaking on my own, not on behalf of the board, but I just want to say that I do not fully agree with the public statement that President Kaplan's about to make, as I do not support all that comes with in today's culture. I believe it discriminates against my faith and that of many across our district who elected me to represent them. I also do not believe that providing materials provides a safe space, when in reality is being confused with wanting affirmation of who they are. I believe that providing materials to minors can create confusion and obliterate the truth of who they are. Thank you.
Mr. Segler.
I wish I had good news tonight. So we'll start off with opening day. I had the pleasure of being at Meadowbrook and watching the students, watching the faculty, first of all, just getting everything set up, and watching the parents and standing outside with the parents and students before they went in. I went in, I was standing with a group of parapros that were in the building, welcoming the students, and about nine o'clock, two second graders go walking by us, and I had to chuckle, because I, the comment out of their mouth was, "This is going to be the longest day." And I'm sitting there thinking to myself, nine o'clock, first day of school, this is going to be a rough year. But, you know, and I also wish we could have bottled the energy and given, given everybody an injection come January when we truly need it, but it was a wonderful thing. I want to thank the board for adopting schools this year. I really look forward to that, and I know that I jumped the gun, Dr. Lanz, I apologize, but I know I've got some beautiful responses from the administrators that I am going to be, have the pleasure of working with a little bit better this year about waiting for me to come in. The Wild Lake Marching Band, I had the pleasure of going to Mr. Dzinski's going-away foray that they had, and I look forward to the dress rehearsal Saturday night.
Yes.
So, great thing, hoping for great things for them for the year. Sports teams have already started and schools in session. As we look at the budget, you know, we, as a board, had to approve our budget in June. Well, we are now at September 4th, we have no budget. I was at a meeting, I was sitting in a meeting last week with some people in Lansing, and this was totally nonpartisan, the group that I was sitting with. And we're sitting there having something to eat, and all of a sudden, somebody comes running in and says they just dumped 400 pages, they're voting in an hour. I won't tell you the look on our face, because I think we were all ash and white and in shock that, how do you do this and how do you vote in an hour? It was done. It doesn't really affirm anything, because you've got the House budget, you've got the Senate budget, and you've got the governor's budget. But part of the issue, as I see it, as a board member and community member, is you look at a budget, possible slashing of $1.1 billion from education funding as we know it. Seems like a large number. Put it into the thought process of take the seven largest districts in the state of Michigan and void them. They don't exist. That's your $1.1 billion. So, you know, if you really want to think, think about a number and look at a number, that is really unbelievable. Other things that we have to look at, free and reduced lunch. When I was in Washington years ago, and we were pushing for that, we wanted it put into law, they wouldn't give it to us in law, they gave it to us as a categorical. As we all know, categoricals can be eliminated whenever somebody wants. Do our students in this district need it? Yes. Do our students in Pontiac, Detroit, and throughout the state need it? Yes. But it's on the, it's one of those things that's on the chopping block. So we're going to have to wait and see what happens over the next 13 days that our representatives are in session between now and September 30th, because that's all it is, is 13 days this month, and hope that something gets accomplished, and hope that it's not as devastating as it is, because the key words that I heard out of people's mouths last week were shut down, impasse, and roads. Nothing about children, nothing about education, nothing about supporting education, but we'll take the money from education, and also the other thing that is part of what they're doing is funding the universities. We cannot have endowments in our district. We cannot have benefactors giving us money in any of the districts in the state, but yet they can take the money out of the school aid fund and use those for University of Michigan, Michigan State, and other universities in the state. I don't have an issue with community colleges. I do have an issue when I look at the big universities that have these endowments, and we are still taking money from our children to subsidize their balances. So I'll get off my soapbox on that. You know, the tragedy that happened last week, our hearts go out, and I know as a parent, as a community member here, we all feel it. Mrs. Crafton, brighter days ahead, speedy recovery, although I just sent her a message today, I said, "Sorry, you know, you had asked me a few weeks ago if I would pick you up for this meeting," and I said, "No." So I lived up to my word on that. And I look forward to the school year. I mean, we have things that we have to overcome, we know that, and we have things that we have to improve upon. We know that, we're cognitive. But give us a chance to get started, give us the assets to work with, pray that we do not have a shutdown at state level, and start, hit the trail running.
Thank you. I'm not going to repeat what everybody said, but, you know, welcome back to school. I'm glad that we're off to a running start. My heart does go out to the families in Minneapolis and hoping Mrs. Crafton gets well soon. I do want to shout out to Kyle Medier. I thought your cross, your crossing guard was fantastic, and I liked seeing that on social media, that was awesome. So keep it up, everybody. That was a great shout-out. I'm going to echo, you know, come to the show on Saturday at Wild Lake Central. You have numerous bands that will be there presenting their shows, and it'll be a fantastic experience, and everyone should come and see it at least once in their lifetime, if not more. It's a great thing to see. I'm going to change my hat quickly and talk about Lake City Youth Assistance. October 7th is our Taste of the Lakes. We would love for you all to attend and come see us. If you're interested in tickets, I have tickets, they're $25 here or $30 at the door. You can see myself, and Mrs. Van Loon may have some in her pocket, I'm not sure. She does not, which is unusual, but, oh, there you go. Good for you. If you would like tickets, you can see me, or you can go on Lake City Youth Assistance's website to purchase tickets. It's October 7th, like I said, at Edward Country Club, and it's a fantastic evening, and I'd love to see everyone there. And moving on, I do have a statement that I'm going to read. Wild Lake Consolidated Schools and all members of the school burdened administration fully support all of our students and staff, regardless of your race, color, national origin, disability, religion, sex, sexual orientation, gender, or gender identity. Furthermore, Wild Lake Consolidated Schools and all members of the school burdened administration support the free expression of ideas and believe that it is important to expose students to a wide variety of educational topics, which includes ensuring that the curriculum in the libraries include materials that make students feel safe and included. Now we're going to move on to the consent agenda. On the consent agenda, we have the approval of the minutes proposed, August 18th, our special board workshop, August 21st, our regular meeting, personnel recommendation, new hires, resignations, retirements, leave and absences, financial reports for June of 2025, disbursements in the amount of $20,972,928. That's it.
That's it?
That's it. That's it? I thought there was more. Can I have a motion, please?
Madam President?
Mr. Lippett.
I move that the Board of Education approve the consent agenda as presented.
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries, six, zero. Moving on to administrative appointment, Dr. Lons.
Dr. Hamka.
Thank you, Dr. Lons. I am pleased to announce or to recommend Mr. Jacob Hess as the next Assistant Principal at Clifford Smart Middle School effective September 8th, 2025. With over a decade of experience in education, including eight years as a middle school social studies teacher and dean of students at Fallerville High School, Jacob brings a strong background in student support and leadership. Passionate about middle school, about the middle school environment, Jacob is excited to return and to supporting and developing learners as they transition into young adulthood. These experiences reflect a deep commitment to building healthy relationships with students, staff, families, to foster both academic success and socio-emotional, socio-emotional growth. Jacob looks forward to becoming part of the Clifford Smart Middle School community and working collaboratively to ensure every learner thrives. Thank you.
I move that the Board of Education approve the appointment of Mr. Jacob Hess as the Assistant Principal at Clifford Smart Middle School effective September 8th, 2025, and that this appointment be made consistent with the provisions of the Wald Lake School Administrators' Association Master Agreement.
Discussion. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries, six, zero. Purchases over 50,000, Dr. Lons.
Thank you, Madam President. Just to back up for a second, Mr. Hess wanted to be here tonight, unfortunately, he had a family emergency that took him away, so hopefully we'll have an opportunity for you to meet him in the future. Mrs. Kowansky.
Thank you, Dr. Lons. One of the purchases I have for you today is the Classroom Library Collections, pre-K through five, which is a collection of elementary texts through a vendor called Book Source in the amount of $461,858.39. As we know, the 35J state grant, which focuses on literacy materials, is set to expire at the end of September of 2025, and the Book Source Classroom Library Collection purchase will fill some critical gaps in our pre-K through five classrooms, providing some relevant engaging high interest texts promoting literacy achievement and motivation. This purchase directly supports 35J's Literacy Strategic Plan and the Michigan's Essential Literacy Practices, ensuring that every student and teacher has access to abundant, relevant, and developmentally targeted reading materials. We have a number of new staff across the district, and if you walk into a veteran teacher's room in a second grade classroom hypothetically, in a brand-new teacher's classroom, second grade, there will be a wide variety of abundant reading materials. We want to be able to bolster that, to be able to make sure that even our youngest, newest teachers in their classrooms also have a lot of materials available for students so that we can work on those skills. These are a variety of texts that are of high interest to kids, as well as decodable texts to help students practice their phonics skills, too.
Mr. Siegler.
I move that the Board of Education approve the purchase of Book Source Classroom Literacy Collections, pre-K five totaling $461,858.39 from 35J Literacy Grant.
Discussion. Mrs. West.
So I had Dr. Lons a few questions regarding this, specifically about pronouns, if those are included in these books. Do we have an answer regarding that? I was very vague in the email that I had a, you sent me it right before I was able to come here, so I didn't really have time to really look closely at any of it.
Yeah, we are in contact with the vendor, and if there's anything that jumps out to you when you have a chance to look at it, we can make those books available to you. So we have not heard specifics back at this point.
Okay, so I will be voting no against this, just because I have not had, if we don't have an answer to this question, I wish I could vote yes, but unless I have that answer, I really firmly believe that this is not appropriate until I can have a clear response on that.
Other discussion? Mr. Smith.
It just popped in my head, Dr. Lons, and you can get back to me later. I see that the grant is expiring at the end of September. Have we exhausted, do we utilize the grant for all of its usefulness?
I guess it's Mrs. Kowansky can ballpark it for us.
Yeah, thank you. We are getting as close to spending all of it as possible. My understanding is there was roughly around a $500,000 balance sitting there. We're getting as close to that, leaving a little bit of cushion for some things that we were catching up on, paying for some literacy work and things like that, and some materials and things that were used in summer school and such, so I think we are really focused and targeted. We don't want to leave any money on the table, so, you know, that was our, that was our hope.
So we're prices right?
Prices writing it, yeah, close to but not over, that's right.
Any other discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries, five, one. Moving on to designation of depositories for school funds, Dr. Lons.
Mrs. Omer.
Thank you, Dr. Lons. Every year, we look at our depositories for our school funds. I will tell you that in reviewing those for this particular year, we don't have any changes from the prior year, so this is more of a formality, but certainly an opportunity for any of the board members to ask any question regarding the list of banks and financial institutions that we engage with during the school year. So, it is brought to your attention each year annually for your approval and review.
Mr. Siegler.
Thank you. I move that the Board of Education approve the bank's financial institutions and brokerage firms as listed and presented as depositories for school funds for the 2025-26 fiscal year, and authorize the Assistant Superintendent of Business Services and/or designee to conduct all banking transactions.
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries, six, zero. School investments, Dr. Lons.
One more time, Mrs. Omer.
Thank you, Dr. Lons. Again, each year, we take a look at our banking institution, financial institutions that we use for investments. These investments are available funds as prescribed by the Michigan Revised School Code, and are invested as such. Available funds are those not required in the immediate future to cover district financial obligations. Examples include bond funds while projects are underway, sinking funds that have not been obligated yet, and property tax revenue received in the summer that would be spent throughout the school year, and hopefully will be, assist us if, God forbid, that there is a government shutdown.
Mr. Siegler.
Thank you.
I saw you moving.
I move that the Board of Education authorize the business office, under the direction of the Assistant Superintendent of Business Services, to invest school district bunnies as prescribed by the Michigan Revised School Code as presented.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, six, zero. Moving on to proclamation about Cancer Awareness Month. I'm going to hand it over.
I think you should.
Dr. Zellner.
Thank you. This proclamation is for Cancer Awareness Month in October. Whereas, over the past several decades, our nation has made significant advances in the fight against cancer. Improvements in early detection and treatment of this disease have led to decreases in the rates of new cases and deaths, and many people who are diagnosed with cancer are living longer with a better quality of life. Despite the breadth of our progress, an estimated 1.8 million people were diagnosed with cancer last year, and more than half a million Americans lost their lives to the disease. During Cancer Awareness Month, October 2025, we renew our commitment to increasing awareness about cancer and reducing the burden of this devastating illness, and, whereas, staff, students, and parents of Wald Lake Consolidated School District have planned several cancer awareness activities throughout the months of September and October 2025, and, whereas, Wald Lake Western High School is holding its 14th annual Warriors for Warriors Pink Out Football Game, including cheer and marching band on September 26, 2025, with proceeds going to two charities, St. Baldry's Foundation for Pediatric Cancer and Angels of Hope Foundation, Michigan. Additionally, Western is hosting a Pink Out Soccer Game on September 6th, as well as Pink Out Week September 22nd through 26th, 2025. Wald Lake Northern High School is having Pink Out Week October 6th through 10th, 2025, with it culminating with the Pink Out Varsity Football Game the evening of October 10th. Wald Lake Central High School's volleyball program will be hosting its first annual Pink Out Night on September 18th, 2025, and Central's soccer program is hosting a special cancer awareness charity soccer game to support local charities in honor of coach and teacher Joel Sharp, who is now cancer-free from his battle last school year. All three high schools will have additional activities to raise funds in support of cancer-related charities such as t-shirt and ribbon sales. Whereas, there will be educational opportunities throughout September and October 2025 to talk to students about healthy habits to prevent cancer, such as avoiding excessive sun exposure, eating a balanced diet, maintaining a healthy weight, and making physical activity part of each day, and, now therefore be it resolved, that the Wald Lake Schools Board of Education, Administration, staff, students, and parents together declare 2025 Cancer Awareness Month in Wald Lake Schools.
Thank you. Now we are moving on to resolution, K-12 state budget, Mr. Siegler.
Thank you again, Mrs. Kaplan. Resolution in support of protecting the school aid fund and passing a timely K-12 budget. Whereas, Michigan law requires legislation to adopt a K-12 school funding budget by July 1st each year, and the 2025-2026 budget has not yet been enacted. Whereas, if legislation fails to act, school districts will miss the October 20th state aid payment, funding that is essential to compensate teachers and staff, maintain student programs, and support, provide transportation, and sustain daily operations. Whereas, proposals to divert school aid dollars to non-educational purchases, purposes such as roads, road repairs undermine the promise made to voters when the fund was created in 1994 to provide stable, equitable K-12 funding. Now therefore be it resolved that the Wald Lake Consolidated School District Board of Education, one, urges the Michigan Legislature to pass a full and fair K-12 school aid budget immediately, two, calls on renewing, calls on lawmakers to protect the school aid fund for its original and intended purpose, educating Michigan's children, three, directs the Superintendent to communicate this resolution to the governor, legislative leaders, and the Oakland County delegation, adopted this fourth day of September 2025 by the Wald Lake Consolidated School District Board of Education. Thank you.
Thank you. And with that, at 7:59 and 45 seconds, we are adjourned. Forty-five seconds.